Good morning, members. Reform the government is also the appointed time. May I call to order the meeting of the Development Panel? The first item on the agenda is Northwest New Territories, New Development Areas Planning and Engineering Study. Please invite the administration to come in. I'd like to declare interest in N E N T I own land. I'm also a member of the Hong Kong Golf Club. Speakers off mic.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang.
Members, please note that Dr. Fernando Zheng has proposed a motion on this item, and the motion circulated to members on the 10th of July. At about 10:10, I am going to deal with this motion. I'd like to welcome the following officials from the administration. All right, I open the floor to members. The secretary has something to say. Chairman, good morning, and members. This morning, I note that there are some reports in the media in relation to land related to my wife and also his family members in N E N T. Am I allowed to say a few words first, Chairman?
Thank you.
Chairman, I note that this morning it was reported in the media that my wife and her family own and land in the N E N T. I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify something first. I myself and my wife currently do not own any land in Hong Kong. And my wife was previously the director and also minority shareholders of a company owned by her family members. In 1994, that company owned or purchased agricultural land with a size of about 20,000 square meters for recreational use. And then in around 2008, about 2,000 square feet of the land was received by the government. And last October, my wife sold all the shareholdings in that company and also resigned from the post of director. Currently, the company is totally owned by her family members. My wife do not have any interest in that company. And the shareholders and directors of the company are not involved in property business. In dealing with N E N T NDAs and when the C, when the X F T Council dealt with this matter, I have made the relevant declaration in accordance with the code for politically appointed officers and also the code for C E. I and my wife owe a residential property in Happy Valley and also two parking spaces. And in Kowloon Bay, we have two joint office units for our own use. Other than that, in Hong Kong, we do not owe any other land or property. I've noted that in the report, there was mentioned, whether in August last year, when I made declaration to the X F T Council, I had some omission. I fully comply with the disclosure or declaration system of the X F T Council. Because the company or shareholdings were owned by my wife, I did not have any beneficiary interest, so there was no need for me to make any declaration. And then in late September last year, when I knew that the site in Kootong Lo was actually in N E N T, I took the initiative to report to the C E and I discussed with my wife on my own initiative, and we sold all the shareholdings. And then that was done in early October last year. The report asked why the change was not noted in the land search or the company registry search? Because the shareholding was withdrawn, and that was reflected in that. And there was a change of directorship. It was reflected in the company's annual report because it's not time for the company to submit its annual report yet. Therefore, it is not registered. I understand that no one was living on the agricultural land. When the land was purchased, it was just for recreational use on holidays for farming. So excitation, special payment does not apply in this case. As for land compensation, it was according to the magazine approved by the council in the 1980s. And every half year, the lands department would re-guess the updated rates. From December, from September last year to now, the Land Planning and Development Committee has not had any discussion on the compensation rate. Thank you. Chairman, can we be given a copy of the secretary's speaking note? I believe the secretary was reading out from his note. Can we be given a copy, Mr. Albert Chen? Secretary, is it okay for our secretariat to photocopy your speech to us? Secretary, please forward a copy to our secretariat for photocopying. But I did not tally. I did not follow the speaking note 100%, but we have voice recording. Mr. Albert Chen.
I think there were two sentences rather notable. First, he said he did not own any beneficiary interest. Why did he choose to use the term beneficiary interest? Does that mean that he has indirect and other forms of interest? Does he owe any interest at all? Please clarify. And then he said that in last August or October, in relation to his wife's shareholding, he said then he had reported to the C E or something to that effect. According to my understanding, it should be done when the declaration of interest is registered. Shouldn't we queue up to ask questions? Well, because I was about to ask the same questions. Oh, I apologize, Mr. James To.
All right, members who raised their hands last time who haven't gotten the opportunity yet, I'll read them out. Lo Wei Quo, Michael Tian, Alan Leung, Chen Yun Han, Tung Lee Si, An Jiang, Lan Kwok Hong, James To, Sid Ho, Brazila Leung, James Tian, KK Feng, Kenneth Chen. Well, we were in the queue. Talk about the golf course issue. But now, well, I think these are two separate issues. Well, Mr. Chen, the secretary, talked about land issues. I could allow him to speak. And after he's made that speech, members have questions. And I think we should allow such questions. But are the two issues actually separated? Of course, they are two separate things. Chairman, you've already made the ruling to allow the secretary to give a statement in relation to his interests. Of course, it's related to this item. Otherwise, you would not have approved at all. So if our questions are related to his opening remarks, I think they are relevant. That's it. Oh, we have a second round of questioning then. Chen Kam Lam, Fernando Zheng, Emily Lau. I'll ask you the second round. You should get started, Chairman. All right, all right. All right, we'll follow our original order. I know there will be more members. All right, each member will have up to four minutes because we are pressed for time. Also, four minutes, including Q and A. If members have any direct pecuniary interest in this issue, please disclose the nature of the interests involved before speaking or before asking questions. So we'll follow our original speaking order. Members who hadn't got the opportunity to ask questions yet after raising their hands last time. All right, first, Dr. Lo Wei Quo. Thank you, Chairman. N E N T N D A has been discussed for a long time. And then in 2007, the previous C E, Mr. Donald Zhang, announced in his policy address that there would be 10 major infrastructure projects, including N E N T NDAs. Well, our new town planning is a successful development model. Further away, we have Taipu and Sha Tin. And nearer to time, we have Chongkuanou and Tongchung. So if our population continues to grow, we have to resolve the housing problem. If we do not make proper use of our variable land resources and plan ahead and make the necessary development, we will be stagnant. So although the N E N T NDAs are very controversial, I think we should get started. And well, the question I want to ask is a very important element in N E N T NDAs is multi-diversified or diversified development, mixed development with economic activities. Well, back then, there was the discussion of industrial estate bringing job opportunities. Because a long time ago, the manufacturing industry was booming, providing a lot of jobs for local people. However, with the reform of economic reform of China and the relocation of production lines to the north, the industrial estate idea can no longer work. So it's indeed true that people have to travel to other districts for employment, creating transportation pressure.
Now, for N E N T development, from the paper, we know that there will be over 30,000 new job opportunities, and there will be economic development. But what sort of industry development, industrial development are we talking about? Shouldn't that be done by the Economic Development Bureau? Now, this morning, the secretary, in relation to land ownership in N E N T, has made a speech. Now, I would like to let the secretary to talk about the lack of real interest he just mentioned. And now, for the property his wife owned earlier on, did he make such, did he make a declaration to the ex-co in relation to that? Secretary.
When the N E N T development was discussed, I made declaration. Yeah, I don't quite know the rules. Was it at the beginning? Now, from the form, I understand that we're to declare our interest. I don't have any real ownership, and I don't have any ownership in name. So there was no need to make declaration. I can say I have no interest at all within that company. For economic development, can I have a written reply on the administration's consideration?
I understand today we have a long meeting, and we have many members waiting to ask questions. So I'll be more stringent with the time control. I understand that the secretary has to leave at 12:00 to board a plane. Mr. Michael Tian.
Four minutes. Oh, make good use of it. I just want to comment on Mr. Fernando Zheng's motion. I opposed to the motion for a simple reason. The administration already said that the C E's lodge and the Fanning Golf Course will be reviewed in the next stage. This is just too early to mix these issues together with N E N T. If we, and the N E N T has been dragging on for so long. And we have Hongshiqiu development coming up. If we stall our feet any longer, I don't know what will happen to Hong Kong in future. And declaration on my part. I am not a member of the Golf Course Golf Club for future review. Hong Kong is cosmopolitan. And you can't resume land for all purposes just to build houses. In Singapore, Taipei, and Tokyo, there are 10 and 20 golf courses. But in Hong Kong, we don't have that many. So for future review, maybe we can open up one of our golf courses for a week for public use. What I mean is that the facilities should be opened up to public more often. And we should also look at the fees. Now, the Fanning Golf Course is open to public use, but the charges is quite high, three times higher than.
Chow Sai. Chow. Housing mix and job opportunities, we need to strike a balance. I think the revised house mix between public and private housing is reasonable. But I think for job opportunities, the original proposal is more reasonable. So why don't we come, join the two proposals? Now, 65,000 houses for public and 65,000 for public housing. So originally, the ratio was 1 to, 3 to 1. And now, with the revised proposal, we have over 170,000 population with private housing 70,000 and public housing 100,000. And for the job opportunities, 37,000 only is a ratio of 5 to 1. Secretary said that it's no problem because the jobs would be close to M T R station and so. Or if that's the case, how come you had the 3 to 1 proposal at the beginning? I think it's reasonable for Hongshiqiu, the ratio is 2 to 1. But because of people's opposition, you changed the ratio. Do we have lots of jobs in the N E N T? For the 170,000 population, can you bring it down? Not be so greedy so that we can keep the earlier ratio. We can have more room for retail because we can provide many job opportunities in that sector. Well, over 10 seconds for the secretary. And thank you for the question. We can't keep the original ratio between population and job opportunities because of land limitations. With more people moving in, we have to reduce the job opportunities. The area is near to Lot Machao Loop, and Hongshiqiu is not very far away. And Hongshiqiu can provide up to 100,000 job opportunities. And 80% of the population will be living within 500 meters of Kootong Station. It's very convenient for them to go to work. Well, you increase the population from 130,000 to 170,000. And that's, I don't understand why you change the ratio. Well, it's hard for him to give you an answer that satisfies you. He didn't answer my question. There is imminent need for housing. So you rather sacrifice job opportunities. The most important thing for you is to build houses. Tony Shi.
For the revised N E N T project, I have some questions. I would like to have written reply if the secretary can't give the full answer. We have lots of figures here. I'm sure the figures are here after some analysis. I want to point out quality and quantity are equally important in development. You have to consider green building, separation of source for solid waste. Now, the, in building public housing, the administration should consider these issues. For job opportunities, now a member and some other members talked about the number of jobs to be created. I hope the administration can ensure that we can reach the target, target job opportunities. So will you reach the target by 2030? For the demographic mix, we're talking about over 100,000 people. And the whole district, I remember, there are 400 and 500,000 people altogether. So what sort of people will be moving in? Young people, elderly people? What sort of people will be moving in there? Because the demographic mix will affect the facilities you're going to provide there and also your planning. So can we have some information later? As for agriculture in N E N T, now people have lots of views on that. In Kootong South, there is 103 hectare of land that can be offered for resumption of farming. Abandoned farmland, I remember 34 hectare, but only five hectare out of which belongs to government. Now, a large area will be for farming purposes for the developers who have purchased the farmland. They have their eyes set on development. And now, it seems some of the land will be for farming purposes. Now, if land owners, that the land can be given back to the government, will that be dealt with by the compensation package? And so little land is from the government. Can that be offered for eco-farming? Will the government rent the land from all these landowners? So you can help the farmers to resume farming and even help those people who are interested in leisure farming. Can you help these people in this way? If you leave the negotiation to themselves, then they will have to face problems in terms of the rent and the tenancy. All these may pose as obstacles in terms of development. So will the government think about helping the farmers and agricultural development? My time's up, I think. Ann Chang.
Chairman, for Fernando Zheng's motion, which is to consider the golf course, I have reservation. I'm not a member of the Fanning Golf Club. I have to declare that. I only went there just a couple of times. But I understand members of the public are very angry. And they asked me to pose this question to the secretary. The Development Bureau, or rather, golf is a very popular sport around the world. And driving range has already been resumed in Chingshaochi and in Shengshui Po. The range was also resumed for housing development as well. And the middle-class people who are in the middle age, they love golf a lot. So at present, when they're free, they can only go to the golf course in Fan Lane just to do exercise. The northeast and northwest of N T, we have over 1 million people, and there's only one golf course. And now, it seems you're proposing to resume this golf course as well. This is not right. For this golf course, will you consider opening it up for all members of public in Hong Kong? So that's my question. Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. I've heard Ms. Chang's views. As I reported earlier on, I said that for the Development Bureau, the Fanning Golf Course and Fanning Lodge would be considered for technical studies.
The H A B will be conducting a review on the land grants for private recreational clubs. There are different aspirations in the community with regard to different priorities. This is natural. Views can be diverse. On the one hand, while we are doing this planning and engineering study, the H A B will also conduct a review. I believe there should be more discussion in society. This is not just the decision of a bureau. Rather, the entire society will be facing a shortage of housing supply together, and there will be other policy needs as well. So the entire society will have to make some choices. Chairman, I actually would like the bureau chief to work together with the H A B. I think we worked on a motion not too long ago. And with regard to the management and opening up of the golf course, I hope you will look into it. Because in Hong Kong, people regard this as a kind of sport. You should open it up for the use by all Hong Kong people. I will go back and reflect your view to the H A B. Thank you. Mr. James To and then Mr. James Tian.
Chairman, I have no choice but to go back to the statement of the bureau chief about his owning of land in N E N T. Because the report has said that in 1994, Mr. Secretary, you bought the land in your own personal name. You signed the contract. It is only at assignment that you used the name of a company, Guo Man Sat Yip. And now you say the interests have been transferred to your wife for substantive owning. And then now the shares have been transferred to the relatives of your wife. I think you need to produce huge amounts of evidence to show whether you still own the land. In 1994, you signed the contract. The money came from you, right? And then if you injected it into a company in which you are the director and you have shares, that means it's still yours. And then you said sometime, suddenly, you didn't own any interest anymore. And then your wife owned.
And then your wife owned the substantive interest. Frankly speaking, we cannot see any evidence, written evidence. And then your wife's interests were transferred to the relatives, her own relatives, so that you did not have to declare anything. Now, it's simple. If your wife sold anything to her relatives, then there should be some valuation done. The IRD would like to know whether you had to pay tax. And then what about the evaluated amount? Or is the whole amount paid? Or is it that the wife's relatives only held the interest on behalf of your wife and in a way on behalf of you? If not the full consideration was paid, that means there is still a trust. In other words, you still own some interest even today. Bureau Chief, don't ever think that just one page can explain anything. Because frankly speaking, if you continue to launch this NENT project, and yet we are not satisfied that you yourself have good reputation, then whatever you do, if you say you don't want to incorporate the golf course into the next stage, and then you pay compensation in a certain way, and then land resumption for private development. And then in the vicinity of private development, you own the land, and yet you can sell the land with a high consideration to the developer because you're close to it. Society is going to ask questions. I will give you a minute or so. With regard to what I said just now, do you intend to reveal all the information today? Mr. Chan, Chairman. Mr. To asked many questions, but some of them belonged to the realm of speculation. Indeed, nineteen years ago in nineteen ninety-four, when the initial purchase agreement was signed, it was me who signed on behalf of the company. Afterwards, when the formal sales and purchase agreement was signed at the law firm, the company itself signed. And the spread of the shares was already done then, and my wife was one minority shareholder only. Mr. To asked whether I was trying to avoid the declaration of interest so my wife transferred the interest to her family members. There is nothing of that sort. In nineteen ninety-four, when the company was set up, her wa, my wife and her relatives were in full possession of the interest, and my wife was a minority shareholder. This year, when we knew that this piece of land was within the NENT development area, I took the initiative to declare to the CE, and I also took the initiative to sell off everything. And I can say categorically that my wife and my children have no interest in this piece of land. Chairman, Bureau Secretary, later on in the day, can you let me know or let us know whether full consideration was paid to your wife by her family members? Chairman, this may be the members' concern. Let me also say this. They signed a sales and purchase agreement. They also reported to the IRD and stamp duty was paid. At the beginning, I told members that the transfer of shares would be reflected in the annual report of companies. Very probably, that company had not filed its annual report for the year, so this is not shown. But my wife resigned from the director's post and also sold off her interest at the beginning of October last year. Next member, James Tian.
Chairman, I'd like to declare that I am involved in property development business. I also have to declare that I am not a member of the Fanning Golf Course. Chairman, we are talking about the NENT development project. I like to spend most of my time on the project, and then I will speak a little on the golf course. As for the Bureau Secretary's matter, everybody is concerned, but then because of time constraint, I don't think I can go into that. Talking about NENT. I have similar analysis of Mr. Michael Tian, so his figures will not be repeated by me. We support the increase of public housing here. But with regard to the employment ratio, in other words, the jobs to be created, you are reducing it from two to one, three to one, to five to one. I think you should review it. Is it, as Mr. Michael Tian said, you should do it down the middle of the course way, and that is four to one? Because the NENT new town will be entirely new, it will be brand new. There will be housing and employment that had to be balanced, but then we should not forget other facilities like a sports ground, community hall, swimming pool, and transport, hospital, clinics. We hope that it will be self-sufficient, that it should be able to provide for itself. Of course, you have to look at traffic and transport as well, or else people would be confined to that area and not be connected to other parts of Hong Kong. But overall, that is a concept we want to work at. As for the private side, we are aware that in fact the administration had not reduced the figures. There is a reduction in ratio, but then the total growth floor area for private use, including business, hotel, retail, housing, that has not been reduced. I'd like the Bureau Secretary to clarify or confirm this point. Secondly, the golf course. Sorry, Mr. Fernando Zhang, I have to apologize to you, I cannot support your motion. I do not play golf, I'm not a member of the golf club. But I think as an international metropolis, Hong Kong only has this Fanning Golf Course. My golf friends tells me, tell me that in other world-class cities, this is only at the bottom of the ranking table. So it is not a world-class golf course. But as other members have said, we believe we should improve the operation of the golf club because the membership is very expensive. Twenty years ago, I applied. At that time, I was already a legislator, but then there has been nothing coming out of the application, and I know nothing about the application and approval process. I think since there are three courses, maybe one should be made available to the public and also the membership approval process, I think that can be improved upon. Thank you. With regard to the golf course club operation, that it should be improved, I'm sure I will reflect your views to the HAB for your views to be factored in in the review. As for private housing, I think there is a reduction of one hundred units. In other words, just a reduction from two four two oh oh to two four one oh oh. As for employment, I think I already mentioned that I won't repeat it. As for traffic and transport, at Kowloon, there will be the Kowloon Station of the Lok Ma Chau Spur Line. And then in Fanning North, there will be a transport node on the east as well as on the west. Mr. KK Feng and then Mr. Kenneth Chan.
Chairman, I'd like to refer to the papers. When you deal with this matter, this is the paper to release the plan, why did it come so late? Should I ask all the questions or should I ask a question and then he should answer me right away? Uh, you should ask all the questions. Okay, I will ask about this paper first, but I have a second batch of questions, and that will come later. Now, this is very clear that there is a conflict of interest. Even if you transfer all the shares to your wife's relatives, those are quite direct relatives to you. You can hardly exonerate yourself from speculation or concerns about conflict of interest. You are susceptible to suspicion. Uh, do you think you should remain in the post? Have you ever thought about resigning? And in fact, basically, you should sever all ties with the work on NENT. You should hand it over to other colleagues. You should not even touch any part of the NENT development. I'll wait for his answer on this first. I'd like the Bureau Secretary to answer this question first. Secretary.
As I said, Chairman, I had already complied with the code for politically appointed officers and also the EXCO Declaration Code. Uh, no, that has already been said, I don't want you to repeat it. Please answer my question. I am answering your question because you asked three questions. Secondly, my wife had proactively sold all her shares. That is a private limited company. So if the shares are not sold to other shareholders or without the consent of other shareholders, they cannot be sold to outsiders. My wife sold her shares to her family members. Well, that kind of information is already in the written statement, I can read. But you asked the question, you asked the same question, so I can only answer you correspondently. Okay, then I don't want you to continue. As a politically appointed official, it is not just about declaration. You are an accountability official and you are responsible for making policies. We are talking about tens of billions of dollars of interest in this project. Whether it is directly or indirectly related to you, or even people have the impression that some of the interests will benefit you or your relatives, you have to declare those. This is not just about declaration at EXCO. This is about political responsibility, this is about your integrity, your morality. And I think there are only two things you can do now. One, resign. Two, sever all work on NENT.
Secretary. The secretary was explaining to you. No, 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 I'm asking whether he agreed to my analysis. What he gave was not really any explanation, because everything was already written on this statement, I can read myself. Chairman. I disagree with the two options proposed by Mr. KK Feng. Myself and my children, in fact, do not have any land interest in NENT. I've said that a number of times. Legislators, can you really disclose everything controlled by your wives? Well, she is a professional, she's an independent person. We're not responsible for this job, you don't have to disclose, but since you are related, you have to do that. Uh, please allow the secretary to finish first, but he hasn't answered my question, Chairman. Well, this is not the court. Well, I, I don't regard it as a court. I think I've really answered this question very clearly. All right, next. Dr. Kenneth Chan.
Chairman, I'm afraid I have to continue to labor this point. Because uh, he made a statement to respond to media inquiries and also accusations that he had land interest in NENT. In meeting with the secretary, I put this question to him. Given that there is so much land in NENT, there is land assumption and exchange compensation, and also public-private sector participation or cooperation. So assume the administration uh, grasp who are the owners of plots of land there and also their status. Because nowadays, people are concerned about collusion between the government and the commercial sector and also transfer of interest. So for this, the government should do it. Because people talk about no removal, no demolition, you want to move people out of their houses, you want to resume the land. And it's found that people who are related to the government or developers have ties here, and this is so unfair. So Secretary, if I remember correctly, your answer was you were not too sure, you didn't have the full picture. Now, this is the right time. You purchased the land personally in nineteen ninety-four, is that correct?
Well, as I said, in nineteen ninety-four, through my representative, well, the first agreement was signed by me when it come, when it came to the actual assignment, it was signed by that company. Well, in July last year, why didn't you disclose in black and white? Because you declared properties owned by your wife through that company. Were you not alert enough? In my decoration form with the executive council, the residential property owed by my wife, because I lived there, so I made that decoration regarding land owned by this company. As I said, I do not have any beneficial interest there. So according to the code for declaration of interest for executive council, I was not required to disclose. However, when this matter was considered by the EXCO, I did make that application. Then if he, if you say so right, how come in September he talks to Mrs. Siwan about this, and then in early October, he sold the land? Well, I had to report this to the CE. My wife proactively sold the shares so that we could have a clear cut with this matter. So that whether it be myself, my wife, and my children in NENT, we won't have any interest. Chairman, it's like this. Well, even though it's not your relatives, we as gatekeeper are concerned as to who would ultimately gain from land interest here. I think this is quite direct, your wife and then family of your wife. I have no intention to drag your wife or his family into this question. But I am just putting questions out of consideration for public interest. And for land resumption, you said that ex gratia payment doesn't apply here, but there would be some compensation because your wife's family is owing land here. And can you tell us what will be the compensation applicable? Yes, this question is important. If we continue to question him on this issue, we cannot discuss the NENT issue. This is a very complicated issue. I'm asking this question on behalf of many kind of folks because they are concerned, they would like to know the interests involved. Yes, it's up to you, Secretary. But your time is up, you have to join the queue again. Mr. Long Kwok-Hung.
Chairman. Well, you represent the interests of two moon and the question of two moon landfill, right? Now?
Well, of course, I don't live in NENT, but it's my constituency. And I think the conduct of government official has everything to do with everyone in Hong Kong. Right, you want us to talk about NENT first, but then how are we going to plan for NENT NDAs and also compensation is paid? Well, it's all under the responsibility of Mr. Paul Chen. I would like to know whether there is any conflict of interest, not to mention transfer of benefits. I think we've asked very fair questions. An accountable officer cannot say that I'm responsible for this project and my friends, including my very close friends. Well, I don't know their connection with this project. This cannot be. Uh, in February, I asked him whether Barry Jung was in trouble, and then Ann Chang stopped me at once, and we quarrelled for three minutes. Well, in politics, we are in, in our, in public office, we are worried about transfer of interest and conflict of interest. All right, Mr. Chan, you said that you informed the CE, what's the point? Well, the CE's company registered in British Virgin Islands. Well, so far, he has not disclosed the real interest. Who was he accountable to? I asked him, but he didn't give me an answer, it's really half a year ago. So you reported that to the CE, what's the point? When he has, has not acted with integrity, what's the point? How can you ensure that you have acted with integrity? All right, you knew that the shares were sold. Did you know whether your wife's family owes, owns land in NENT? Have you asked Ms. Ling? Please ensure that do not net, do not include land there because
because my wife's family owns land there to avoid any suspicion of conflict of interest. Ms. Ling was acted like a parent and she lectured me on using vulgar language and now she's promoted to help the C E. All right, all right, Ms. Ling. She said that as a parent, she found my language regrettable. But can you have any control over your superior who's so corrupt? Mr. Paul Chen, have you ever asked your subordinate, have you given her a note? Like mainlanders do, I have a possible conflict of interest and please remind me every day that I have to clean up first before I proceed with this. Ms. Ling, has she, has he ever said such to you? Now, Ms. Ling is your subordinate. Have you ever said so? If yes, show me the email to tell her that you've already disclosed to the C E that I have possible or suspected conflict of interest and remind me every day once. Allow me to answer. Colleagues of the planning department, when they were planning for N D N T, I said time again that they would pay no heed to the ownership of land there. I have never said, I have never said to the planning department of the lands department. Please allow him to answer first. Well, of course, I've never, well, public officers should monitor the political offices. When political officers have done anything wrong, they should be reminded by civil servants. Of course, I'm angry. You're not. Of course, I'm angry. Well, you can go to me back. I've never made any direction on planning or compensation to the planning department and the lands department. As I said, the colleagues of the planning department would follow the topography and various aspects of N D N T to make the best planning. They will have no regard to land ownership. Mrs. Regina Ip, thank you, chairman. I have three points to make. First, I share the views of Dr. Lo Wei Kwok, Mr. James and Mr. James Chen. We need to develop. Well, in the nineteen eighties, I joined the government. I was posted to the N T and so I knew you back then. So you remember the entire way, it was famous for the bean curd there. But Taiwai, the Tawa village was demolished. And before that village was demolished, Mr. Michael Shuen invited me there to try the bean curd, sweet bean curd once again. So of course, in demolition, we must ensure that there is fair compensation and affected villagers will be properly rehoused. But we cannot say that we will be strongly against any development simply because some communities would be affected. And then in the process of development, we cannot just build buildings. In a place, if there are only residential buildings, where can people go to work? It would be another issue why people have to travel a long way to go to work. And we should not think that twenty years down the road, everyone will be working in Shenzhen. Then Hong Kong will become hollow. Hong Kong cannot just be a garden for people from Shenzhen. So we must reserve land for development of industries. Thirdly, about the golf course. First, I have to declare I'm a member of the golf course, but I think some facts are not really clear. For instance, this oversimplification that only two thousand members can enjoy. That's hundred seventy hectares of land. No, in fact, there are twenty five hundred members. If we cover the junior members and their spouses, five thousand in total. And every year, there are over three thousand games played for members by members of the club as well as members of the public. The cup, the club was established in nineteen eighty-nine. Well, in Fanning, the golf course was built in nineteen ninety-one with the support of the indigenous villagers and also the British Army. There were many old mature trees there and there were ancestral graves. It was part of our city where we need diversified development. We should not just have buildings, residential developments with no golf courses. Well, Scotland, where a golf course started, well, that, that we must have diversified development. A member of the golf course told me that he queued up for many, many years before he acquired his membership. Why is it that in Hong Kong, we have no respect for private ownership? Have we become a communist state? Is it that Mr. Tang Shoupeng only said that horse races could go on and we can continue to dance? And he omitted to say about playing golf because I don't want Hong Kong to become a communist party. If there is equal distribut, if everyone is equal here, then there will be no social or upward mobility. Some against, including the C S Lodge and the Fanning Golf Course into N D N T. If you say that the fee they pay is too low, well, you can review it. And I agree that the golf course can be made available for training of students and sportsmen. But I am against the idea that because of hostility towards the rich and also equal distribution of wealth, the golf course should be pulled down. This is not conducive to further development of Hong Kong. Mr. Chen, well, we note Mrs. Regina Ip's views. As I said, when the H A B reviews such matters, Mrs. Regina Ip's views would be considered. And we will consider the golf course in our overall development of N T North. Mr. Kenneth Long, well, Mr. Paul Chen, please refer to item four of your statement. You said that in early, in early October last year, your wife sold all the shares and also resigned from the post of director. I'd like to know whether the company, it's a Hong Kong company, a Hong Kong company. And what about the share, the percentage of shares she owed? Can you remember? Three percent. All right, three percent, three percent. Oh, I is three eighths, three eighths of the shares. Oh, that's quite substantial. So three eighths of the shares were all sold. So the purchaser was a member of your wife's family. Am I correct? Yes. Can, could, could, can you remember roughly the consideration? Or have you forgotten or do you have to check and give us supplementary information? There is something strictly between themselves, but it's also a public matter. Chairman, don't you think that there should be disclosure? Chairman, please make a ruling. It's not for me to make a ruling. Is that right? All right, I'll not ask you about a consideration. Is it arms-length transaction? Is it at arms-length? Have you received, she received full consideration? Details of the transaction is something between my wife and her family, but it's also a public matter. Am I correct? All right, can you clarify whether it was really at arms-length? If you can make such a statement here, I can let you go. If the transaction was at arms-length, meaning that the transaction or the consideration was fixed according to market value is not a nominal cost of say, I sell my house to you at ten dollars. Well, the consideration is really something between themselves. Without their consent, how can I make any disclosure here? This is totally unacceptable because if it is say at a consideration of ten dollars, then it is unacceptable. So my question is whether was it an arms-length price? I'm not asking you to disclose the actual consideration. Well, as far as I know, it is. It was. Right, the next line. Members of her family, do you know what's the relationship between her and the family's member? Her side. So, so you don't know her family members? How come I don't know their family members, but it's something between my wife and her family? You don't have to quote names, but can you tell us the relationship? I think I have said a lot, a lot. Well, since it's in on this page, I think Mr. Chen owes us an explanation. I'd like to know what members of her family. Tell us what is the relationship? Chairman, please direct Mr. Chen to answer. Chairman. Family members of my wife. Chairman, depending the case, I cannot force an answer out of Mr. Chen. He has chosen not to answer my question. Right, there are four members still registered to us in the first round, but they've yet to arrive. Second round, I've got eleven members. And they are Chang Kam Lam, Fernando Jung, Albert Chen, Wu Chi Wei, Emily Lau, Ronnie Tong, Gary Fan, Ann Jung, K K Feng, James To, Kenneth Chen. I think we must really adhere to our time limit more strictly, three minutes each.
All right, we have up to ten forty for this item. Members in the second round, Mr. Chang Kam Lam is not here, so Fernando Chung. Thank you, chairman. First of all, I think I, my motion should be dealt with today. And for members who are members of the golf club, they should not vote on my motion because of possible conflict of interest. And later, when the motion is put to vote, if these members vote on my motion, I'll ask to have their votes declared invalid under R O P eighty-four. I think we have to respect the rule governing conflict of interest. Now, secretary, your family owns the land and this story is revealed by the media. It's only then that you admit to the public about this matter. This is regrettable. I think when you took office in October, you should have known that you would be responsible for N D N T development and other development projects. So if there is any conflict of interest or any conflict of interest on the part of your direct relatives, you should have made these matters clear. Now, these problems come to you repeatedly and people question your credibility as a result. Now, yesterday, an NGO put forward their own proposal for the development of the golf course in Fanning. I think this is a very good proposal. In relation to N D N T development, we have already reached and almost reached a saturation point, especially when it comes to traffic. So their proposal is to take two-thirds of the golf course for development and not to incorporate one hundred seventy thousand people, but eighty thousand. There should be light industry and there should be green element and conservation. They've also put forward some proposal about transport. It is a green transport they are talking about. I hope the secretary will think seriously about this proposal. This proposal is something rushed out by planners and the related bodies. So I hope the secretary will consider these proposals by the professionals, including the architects. Secretary, please. I would like to thank the professionals in the community for putting forward this proposal. But as I said repeatedly, this can't replace the current N D N T development project. If we have to include the golf course for consideration before we start the project, then we'll be several years behind our schedule. Ms. Lau.
Now, you are really a controversial figure and you haven't made clear statements. As Mr. Chen said, you should have made declarations, but now you're subject to these stories revealed by the media. It's only then that you make responses. This is very worry, worrying. And people have questions about you. As soon as you took office, there are stories saying that you speculate, you entered into speculation of subdivided flats and it's already a controversial matter. And now for this project, it seems that you are, you have some interest in this project. So how can you ask the members of the public to say that you are fair and that you are someone who is appropriate to handle this project? The statement given by the secretary was commented on. You took office last August, secretary, and it's only in September last year that you discussed with your wife about this matter. And then the matter was reported to the C E and your wife then sold all the shares. So is it the case that you did not need to make declaration? But after discussing with the C E, you decided to sell the shares. What do you mean by that? What do you mean by reporting, reporting to the C E? If under the rules, you have to make declaration, you should make declaration. Then how come you report the matter but did not make declaration and then the shares were sold? Did you make timely declaration to the public? Now, the fourth point about land compensation. You said that the related committee has not made and has not had any meetings yet concerning the compensation. What do you mean by that? So you would only declare once again after they have had the meeting. Is that the case? From the newspapers, we understand that the land has been purchased by the secretary and then they were sold and the secretary gained thirty-five times than the original price. This is really shocking. So secretary, how can you alleviate our worries? And after the meeting, please give us a very detailed document, paper to address all these points, secretary.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lau. Thank you for the question. As I said earlier on, when I took office at end July last year, I filled in the declaration form to EXCO. And the interest you're talking about did not belong to me, so I did not have to make declaration on that. And in September, I came to know that the land falls within the boundary of N D N T project. That's why I reported the matter to the C E and I took the initiative to sell the shares. Please understand that the land was purchased in ninety-four, that is nineteen years ago. And when the land was purchased, as I answered, Mr. James To, the representative, the agent was responsible and I signed on the paper. Well, in fact, in May, the company, the company Well, in fact, in May, the company, the company owned by my wife and her relatives signed the document in May. Now, I think I've already made detailed declaration. So how come you took the action you did in September if you were not supposed to make declaration? Because the land is within the boundary of the development project. That's why after discussion, we did not want to have any misunderstanding. That's why my wife sold all the shares. And in early October, the shares were sold and she also resigned from the post of director. What about the compensation? All right. As said, the compensation mechanism was endorsed by LedgeCo in the eighties. The lands department, every half a year gets at the mechanism. And the committee on planning and lands development have not discussed any issues relating to this matter. Well, you already felt that there might be some problems in September. That's why the shares were sold. People have this impression that you still have lots of interest here. Okay, when, or if we talk about compensation, will you tell us that your family members, your relatives may stand to gain a lot? And will you make such declaration when we discuss compensation later in the meetings? As I said earlier, my family, my children have not got any interest any longer. If declaration is required, I will do that. I only have three minutes, Chairman, so I'll be brief. Please order, order. All right, three minutes for you. Can I have a chance? I only have three minutes. Chairman, concerning the issues related to the Secretary, even if the shares were sold in market price, at market price, we're talk, still talking about conflict of interest. And the shares were held by the, so there is conflict of interest. Because his family owned the land. I don't think NENT project is of public justice. And I support public justice, social justice. And we're talking about farmers who don't have much property, who will be affected. And an NGO put forward this proposal to make use of golf course. I support this proposal. If we can ensure that the clear rees will not be affected in taking, in making use of the golf course, I think we should do that and it is a reasonable price to pay. Now, I want to seek the Secretary's views on this. The Secretary said that NENT development will offer housing to one hundred seventy thousand people. But for this population, what about job opportunities, transport, so, uh, social, community, facilities? Will their needs be addressed in these regards? And can our railway take care of the needs of one hundred seventy thousand people? And will there be sufficient job opportunities for these people? Please bear in mind the interests of Hong Kong people, Secretary. Last time at the meeting, you asked me to talk about the misleading points I raised about the paper. In fact, I already made a press release last Friday about what I meant by misleading representations. Mr. Ronnie Tong's question, well, we can give a written reply to that. For NENT development, it cannot be replaced by a development of golf course. The golf course will be put under review for NT North. Now, if we only take a two-third of the golf course, we're talking about one hundred hectare. You don't understand the crux of the matter for NENT development. You haven't taken care of the change of life to the villagers. That's why there's this other proposal from the community to replace the current one. So how come you are not responding to the points, to the public aspiration? Because of time constraint, I'll give a brief answer. When we consider the finalized version, we try our best to take care of the needs of as many as possible. So you consider paying six hundred thousand will be enough. So how much is your call? Can I finish? Can I finish, Mr. Tong? When we consider the proposal, we have to accommodate one hundred seventy thousand people building sixty thousand flats. And some people will be affected inevitably. We already minimized the impact. And the affected household will stand at one thousand, one thousand. And we will give them compensation for these squatters. We understand their plight. However, many of them do not have land title. If they hold land title, they will get the relevant compensation. We have to consider making use of public use properly. And we already paid heed to that and give appropriate action. Mr. Albert Chen.
Speakers of mic. I have a motion to move, that is to ask the Secretary to resign. And I, it reads, Mr. Paul Chen, since he took office, is embroiled in scandals, drunk driving, operating subdivided flats and owns plots of land in Kootong. So members of the public in relation to his dealing with the, uh, land issues lost interest in him. Lost confidence in him. So this panel urges Mr. Paul Chen to resign from the post of Development Secretary. Now, for the Development Bureau, even in the days of Tong Chi Wah, the Bureau was headed by civil servants. It's because the Bureau deals with land. So there is all sorts of layers of interest. Now, Mr. Chen started off as an accountant. We know that accountants in Hong Kong help corporates. And these people, these professionals are very good at concealing interest. And otherwise, they, if not, they would not be so rich. They are very good at evading tax. And Mr. Chen has been non-executive director of some corporates. And Kootong is about lots of land and lots of interest. People don't have confidence in this person. We're talking about large land resumption and we don't know how many more scandals are to come. And BBI, this is Subcommittee. And your company is also registered with a BBI. We don't know how many invisible indirect interest or interest that you, you declare only afterwards. If you continue in this way, we have to consider the upcoming projects. For example, the Kootong project and other projects in NT. If you are allowed to continue in this way, it's not fair to Hong Kong people. Members of the public will only get angrier and angrier. You sit here, you enter into speculation and you gain lots of profits. Now, you may purchase the land over twenty years ago, but because of that decision, you stand to gain a lot. And because of that, the government will have to give more compensation. If you are allowed to continue in this way, well, you shouldn't be touching any projects. And any projects you touch, uh, the public will stand in your way and we won't have any development. So I submit my motion.
Mr. Wu Chi Wei.
I thank you, Chairman. Sometimes I feel very frustrated too. And, well, Mr. Paul Chen, you have to face lots of accusations in relation to land. Since you took office, you have been trying very hard to do a good job, Mr. Chen. But there's something that is undeniable, that people question your credibility. And so the discussion on projects are affected as a result. So Secretary, you should seriously think about whether you can still be the right person for this job. You may want to do a good job, but your credibility is questioned. And so the results of the discussion will be swayed as a, will be swayed. So I've made my comments. Now coming to my questions for you. For NENT project, people often talk about the combination of urban and farming development. Is it a must that you have to take away the farmland? If we can have a combination of urban and rural development, is it really impossible to include farming? Or is there a chance for you to have development of seven hundred hectare while keeping farming and urban and rural integration? Instead of leaving, people pitched against each other. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wu. With regard to queries on me, I think they are based on unfair accusations, just as what Mr. Albert Chen said. And I like to record that, uh, Mr. Chen's accusation against accountants is unfair and also misleading. As for integrating urban and rural development, can I ask Mr. Lee, the Deputy Director of Planning, to say a few words? Ms. Lee.
This is going to be a new town in the NT. And one major consideration is integrating urban and rural development. We have preserved ninety-five hectares of farmland. At Long Valley, we are going to have a nature-themed park. Chairman, so that there will be wet farming as well as ecological preservation. Chairman, Chairman.
Yes, sorry. I heard that already. We were talking about integration between urban and rural development. We mean that in the development, with regard to the controversial pieces of land, I'm not talking about Kootong South or Long Valley. I'm talking about the land which is subject to controversy. According to views received at Fanning North, we are going to preserve some farmland. When farmland cannot be preserved, this is because it is near to the town center and also in the main development area. Whatever can be preserved for natural, uh, development and farming, that will be done. But if because of planning purposes, uh, they cannot be preserved, then it will be quite difficult.
Priscilla Lau for the first round. Uh, you should be quick. We are already in the second round. You have four minutes. Thank you, Chairman.
Whether or not we should pack the golf course to NENT development, I don't think so. I support the plan for new town development. But on compensation, I hope the administration can do better. I have been to many cities. I was quite impressed by Chengdu. I was researching into the tax system in Chengdu and I asked the courts there whether they had to deal with a lot of disputes with regard to removal. But Chengdu is not a city that has to deal with a lot of these compared to the entire nation. The displaced residents would be moved to a place, uh, identified by the government and the displaced residents actually welcomed it. And of course, there would be cash compensation and in fact, residents had a choice as to where they would like to move in. So in terms of compensation and planning, if you can do better, I'm sure you can reduce the disturbance caused to villagers. Should we really make use of the golf land to, or for exchange? Or do you have to, first of all, consider developing the golf course? I think that will take a long time. And some professionals have told me that the planning alone would take years. And then for it to come to LedgeCo, that might be eight to ten years away. That is not realistic. But in the long term, you said you have an open mind to explore into the issue. I think that can be done. But I don't think we should have this mentality of hating the rich. I think that is not healthy. People are saying, deal with the golf club first before you deal with other pieces of land. I don't think that's the way it should be done. Sometimes people would say, don't do this, but distribute the money. And then people would benefit, TSA recipients would benefit. But I don't think that should be the mentality. I absolutely support the NENT project. But please to villagers and do a better compensation job, Secretary.
Thank you, I've heard her. Next, Gary Fan. Chairman.
PowerPoint, can I please ask the clerk to help me? I just like to make a few points, Chairman. Secretary, at the end of last year, I already told you that after the third public engagement exercise, the administration must withdraw the entire NENT project proposal to conduct another bottom-up democratic consultation before you can deal with the problem. Now, you are suspected of having a conflict of interest and you are not a fit and proper person to lead the NENT project and rush it through anymore. This is not going to be, um, dealt with in any way by your own personal, um, will. And I told you already that, uh, C Y Lau is a recipe for disaster. Now you have joined him. And you are in this government where the rule, ruling is done by shouting slogans. Other members have said that there should be development, but for whom? We are worried that there would be this tycoon's backyard. Uh, Ms. Regina Ip was talking about egalitarianism. But no, Hong Kong has land. It is just that there is not fair distribution of land. Just two thousand or two thousand five hundred tycoons are trying to preserve their right to play golf. But at the same time, you are going to evict people in NENT, uh, which has not been seen in the last thirty years. This is not about private property. This is government land. We are not depriving them of their land rights like the communists did. But then these people are using government land. James Ten said that it is not a top-class golf course. But then Michael Ten said it is top-class and Regina Ip says it is world-class, so it should be preserved. But then other people are having their homes destroyed. You have to pay two thousand dollars for three hours to play golf there. But then if you earn the basic minimum pay, you have to work sixty, seventy hours to pay that amount. So look at housing and the unfair distribution of land in Hong Kong. This is what we have to face up to in the proposal proposed by the civic community, a group of professionals have worked together to put together this proposal. Please go to Slide 6 or 7. They directly respond to the questions asked by the civic community of the administration. And if you go for this replacement proposal, there would be a saving of $30 billion. The media are questioning that some of the $30 billion would go into the pocket of Mr. Paul Chen's wife. And you don't have to negotiate with the land developers, so you save time. They have a proposal for no removal, no demolition. They don't want compensation. Because when residents or villagers will not be affected, they don't want compensation. There are three courses of 18 holes. They are only taking away two and one will be preserved. If you want to play golf, you can continue to do so. Slide number 7. This will respond to Michael Tien's point on employment. There will be light industries. There will be non-staple foods. There will be food waste for recycling. So, we can deal with the issue of integration between urban and rural development. I ask the administration to be prudent and very careful in studying this proposal. You cannot shout the slogan to say this is no replacement for your original proposal because you're not answering the questions.
Secretary, I understand there is time constraint. Let me just say a few words. We have given this careful consideration, but this covers a big area. And under the law, if the ERA has to be done, that will take one or two years. And then we also have to do an assessment on infrastructure. If we want to do this, if the golf course has to be developed, we need at least a few years. And then there is the public engagement exercise. So we cannot replace the NENT plan with this one. Thank you.
Order, please. KK Feng, Chairman.
Some members call names of others who differ from them in opinion, saying that they hate the rich, that they are misleading, etc. I don't think we should go for such diction in this forum. We are just speaking our mind. You can disagree with me, but you cannot call me names. How can you say I hate the rich? Now, if you want me to name the councillors, Regina Ip and Priscilla Leng, they say we are blind, we are hating the rich, etc. I originally did not want to name the councillors, but you asked me. This is an area of 170 hectares for 2,500 people to play golf. You should have selected the piece of land and thought about it from the very beginning. It is already too late when people ask you to consider it. This is also government land. It is not a private piece of land. You are not grabbing land from the rich to distribute it to the poor. This is government land. You say you want to find land and you are quite unscrupulous. You are tearing down factory buildings in Shangshui Po in order to build public housing. I support building PRH, but I don't think you should tear down factory buildings. You are quite unscrupulous in trying to find land. Who is hating the rich? Who is blind? Is this egalitarianism? Please, don't use such wording. On the one hand, you say there should be harmony, there should be discussion, but on the other hand, you call people names. Chairman, I disagree with the project and giving no thoughts to the golf course. You must do it. This is not the only golf course. There are other golf courses in Hong Kong and you can very well go there. But 230,000 Hong Kong people are queuing up for PRH. They do not have a roof over their head. 170,000 are in subdivided flats. Some of them even in subdivided flats and factory buildings, which you want to put an end to. The CCF would like to give money to the air nothings, but then there would not be any for people living in subdivided flats in factory buildings, even if they are extremely poor. If these are juxtaposed, one against another, it gives people the impression that the administration is inclined towards the rich and the business community. You should be fair. That's all from me.
Secretary, your response?
Chairman, many members, many golf courses. I already said that it will be incorporated into the planning study for NT North. Why did you not give any thought to the golf course at the beginning? Chairman, making use of the golf course for development was raised only in the third PE in August, September last year. As I said at the development panel last week here, whatever could be resumed would be given a short-term tenancy and we had already done so. But the remaining 170 hectares had to be subject to detailed planning before it could be used for development. At the same time, HAB is conducting a review on land grants for private recreation grounds. So we cannot do this overnight.
Thank you. Because of time constraint, I would just allow two more members to speak. And then we have to deal with the motions. Kenneth Chan and Regina Ip. And I'll draw a line there. Over 20 member speeches would have been made after the first and second rounds. Kenneth Chan.
Chairman, we have two motions today. One moved by Mr. Fernando Zheng. And that is the civic proposal should be included in the NENT development planning for consultation. It is very mildly worded. It is very reasonable. And it can be clearly seen in the dialogue just now. And that the secretary has cited timing as the strongest reason for killing off this civic proposal. This is very uncivilized. It is very rude. No matter what the motion result will be, at least at the development panel, we should invite the civic community to come here to explain the proposal to us and allow the public to be informed. This is a very important part of the entire consultation and public engagement exercise. If you think that you have already done a lot and you don't want to hear anything more about this, it's totally unfair. With regard to the golf course, I don't hate the rich at all, so I cannot accept that kind of discussion. In fact, if you look at the basic law, land-owning rights belong to the country. It is just that you can have different grants for the use of the land. So I would strongly put it here that the civic party respects private property rights. Talking about the golf course, we are not trying to snatch property from people. We are not hating the rich. If we are accused of those, I think they have been fabricated. We are looking at villages, which will have to be demolished and villagers evicted. They are talking about the basic human rights which are threatened. Why can't we widen the scope of this discussion? Some pro-establishment members would just follow the administration's harp and say that whatever it takes, development should be taken forward. And but then we can have integration of rural and urban development. Why don't we do it? And Secretary, about the Mr. Albert Chan's motion, I cannot accept some of the wording because it can be arbitrary. But then I agree with the thrust of the motion. In fact, ever since you assumed office in August last year, there have been quite a number of times when we debated whether you would still be able to hold the post because you would not be found suitable. Now coming to this stage, we are looking at a suspicion of conflict of interest and a transfer of benefits. You can see that half of the discussion today have been concentrated on you, Secretary. Just resign, Secretary. Come on.
Order, please. Any response? Thank you, Chairman.
On the golf course, apart from timing, since Kootong North and Fanning North with their geographical location should be quite suited for development. Even if after the review, the golf course has to be subject to development, it cannot be a replacement option for NENT project. As I said, I have already said that I cannot accept the accusations against me. I think they are unfair.
Regina Ip.
Chairman, I'd like to clarify. I did not call names. I just pointed out that if the mentality is that 170 hectares should be used only by 5,000 people and then it should be fairly distributed, then it is a kind of egalitarianism. And some academics have even said that each member would have 7,000 square meters to use. Now, this is misleading because we do not own the land and our membership. I'm not talking about myself. For some people, they have worked hard for many years. They were queuing up for a long time and they finally was granted membership. And it is a kind of property right. We are a city ruled by the rule of law and we have a free economy. I think this should be respected. I'd just like to clarify that kind of mentality. Thank you.
If there's no more response, then Mr. Raymond Chen Chi Chun, first round.
I said once already. This is my second time speaking. Okay, second round. Thank you, Chairman. The CY Leng administration said that they would launch a policy when it is mature. When I look at the NENT project, I would say that it is immature. It is quite raw. It is so raw. It should be dealt with again. Please retract what you said on your blog. Mr. Secretary, you said this is a final proposal. It shouldn't be the final proposal at all. You are not launching a policy once it is mature. You are allowing scandals to explode while they are discovered by the public.
It's hard to one year and then you have another scandal. I think you are the top. You top the list when it comes to scandals, Mr. Chen. Right. Well, back then, the government might not have thought of the golf course, but that's the negligence, so you have to admit to that. And then the secretary told us last time that 1.5 hectares of land was already resumed. But we're talking 170 hectares of golf course. And you have resumed 1.7... 1.5 hectares back for disposal. Well, is that good enough? And then you've put that to NT North. I think this is just dealing tactics. Why don't you stop everything? And then consult once again after you've completed your study on NT North. Why do I fight for the marriage right? You have to understand that without the right to get married, I won't have any wife. I won't have any in-laws. And if I have land, I cannot put it under the name of my spouse and also her family member. Well, once the landlord comes under the name of his wife's family member, he can have no control. Well, when Mr. Anthony Leng purchased a car, he had to step down. All right, what's wrong if his wife runs a car business? What would it be like then? Now, I think we have a very stringent requirement for Mr. Paul Chen. This is not the court. You abuse all the posts, saying that you have not broken the law. If you've broken the law, it would be for the ICAC to investigate. Now, I think we will not accept your acceptance here, your explanation here. You are no longer appropriate for dealing with the NENT because of conflict of interest. It's difficult for you to explain away. I'd like to know whether CY Leng connived to this thing because he was aware of this and last September, CY Leng taught him to do that. So, Secretary, you have to consider this thoroughly. I think the political pressure will continue to mount on you in the coming few days. I don't know whether they have even more fatal information because the media will report this bit by bit. All right, we ask Mr. Paul Chen to resign so as to restore people's confidence in the Development Bureau. A simple response, the accusations are not fair and misleading. Thank you. All right. I think 120 members have expressed their views in the first and second rounds. I think we have ample opportunity to discuss this already. So we'll end the question time and then we will deal with Dr. Fernando Zheng's motion. Secretary, please read out.
Dr. Fernando Zheng's motion has been tabled today and also distributed last time. And it reads that the NENT development plan is going to affect many local residents, affecting or destroying their homes and farmland. In some cases, the entire village might be eliminated. This panel thinks that land and housing development should avoid causing damage to their homes and lifestyle. This panel urges the administration to incorporate defending golf course and the ceasefire Fanning Lodge into the NENT development plan and conduct a new round of consultation with these two sides included.
Any second, I declare interest. I'm a member of the golf course. Dr. Fernando Zheng, any second. Any second. Any second for Dr. Fernando Zheng's motion, Mr. Albert Chen.
Speakers of mic. All right, I won't vote on this item. All right. Speakers of mic. Because of our tight schedule, I suggested we put this item to the vote now. We ask for the vision. Please rule, Chairman, whether I can vote or not. Secretary, please give us the rules. Please tell us the House rules.
According to 84-1 of the ROP, members cannot vote on items where they have a direct pecuniary interest in any panel meeting unless the interest is equally shared by a part or everyone in the territory or is related to government's policies. So, Chairman, you have to make a ruling as to put that. Mrs. Regina Ip can vote or not.
Well, to play safe, I think it's better that Mrs. Ip does not rule, does not vote on this item. I won't myself. I remain neutral. So as not to cause any controversy.
All right, please now vote on Dr Fernando Jung's motion. Please vote. Those who are for, oh, what? We want to press the buttons? All right, those who are for the motion, hands up, please. Please note the names of members voting. Please the secretary to read out our names so that we can put down. All right. Mr Kenneth Chan, Wu Chi Wei, Emily Lau, James To, Leng Kwok Hong, and on the other side, Albert Chan, K K Fong, Kenneth Chan, Gary Fan, Chan Chi Chung, Fernando Jung, and Sid Ho. Those who are against, please put up their hands. Priscilla Leng, James Chan, Ip Kwok Him, Michael Tien, Lo Wai Kwok, An Chang, Gary Chan, Chan Kim Po, Tony Zi. Those are against the motion. Abstention, Regina Ip. Twelve members are for, nine against, one abstention. So the motion is carried. Dr Fernando Jung's motion is passed. Now, we have to deal with the motion by Mr Albert Chan. Do we agree? All right. You talk about Mr Albert Chan's motion, Mr Albert Chan, or secretary. Mr Albert Chan's motion. Since Mr Paul Chan has been involved in a series of scandals, including drink driving, oppression of subdivided units, and also owning several farmland in Kutong for frappeering, leading to a loss of confidence in Mr Albert Chan in land planning. In order to restore confidence for the Development Bureau and to ensure that work of the Bureau can conduct smoothly, this panel urges that Mr Paul Chan resigns from the post of secretary for development immediately. Mr Ip, I'd like to know whether it is within our power, within the power of this panel to move such a motion. Well, it's open to discussion. Speakers of mic. All right, I'll ask, I'll invite members to comment on this before we pass this item or we vote on this item. Legal advisor, please advise. A show of hands, please. Those who are for dealing with this motion, hands up. Those who are against, Chairman, Chairman. Mr James To. To allay Mr Ip Kwok Him's concern, both Mr Chan's move of this motion can add N E N T before land planning, then I'm sure the motion will be relevant. I believe it is relevant because we're talking about N E N T and land planning matters of N E N T. It is certainly related because it's about trust and the whole Development Bureau. How can it be irrelevant? And it's about land planning. I, my motion is very carefully worded, involved in a series of scandal in covering a few things, leading to a loss in public confidence for him to deal with land planning issues. Of course, land planning issues will involve N E N T. So it's hundred percent within our R O P. Mr Ip Kwok Him, my question is very simple. Of course, movers of the motion would certainly think that the motion is relevant. My request is very simple. Can the chairman invite our legal advisor to explain this for us? All right, I suspend the meeting for five minutes. Okay, I suspend the minute, the meeting for five minutes. Of course, they are calling people back to vote. They don't have enough votes yet. All right. Twelve against, nine. Well, we give you five minutes. All right, we support filibustering by Mr Ip Kwok Him.